Get video on here, get video on here, get video on here, get video on. There's video on here, I think. All right, thank you. Sounding, hearing great. Okay. Well, good afternoon. Welcome to Fort Lauderdale City Commission Conference Meeting, October 3rd, 2022. Vice Mayor Ben Sorensen, the mayor is out of the country, so I'll be filling in his stead and honored to have Commissioner Glassman here as well. And we will move forward with city business. Commissioner, sound good?
Sounds good. I think we should take a selfie of ourselves.
I think we should take a selfie.
Yeah, we're here, the two of us are here.
That's right.
We're at work and we're doing it.
We're here to do it. We're here to serve the people.
Okay.
A dynamic duo here.
Let's do it.
Let's do it. Mr. City Manager, so I think let's, let's start off, I'll read this little bit about commission meetings. So, City of Fort Lauderdale is hosting commission meetings in person. For additional information on how to view the meeting, please visit fortlatterell.gov backslash city commission meetings. To help ensure decorum, we ask that you please abide by the following guidelines. Please refrain from any behavior that's disruptive, distracting, profane, or inhibits the meeting in any way. And if you wish to speak on a specific agenda item, please sign up in the City Hall lobby. A member of the City Clerk's office staff will be there to assist. If you need additional help, we're happy to help during the meeting and fantastic City Clerk is right here for us to support as we're moving through the meeting. So, the agenda, hopefully all of you in the public have been able to see the agenda online. And we will kind of start off with that. City Manager, we're going to start off with communications to the City Commission.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Good afternoon, Vice Mayor and Commissioner. Yes, we do have two communications to the City Commission. One is from the BAB and the other one is from the Board of Adjustments. Would you like to speak further on the BAB?
Yep, and.
Communications?
Yeah, and so in terms of the BAB, obviously the good news is approve the budget unanimously, which is great. And then this additional recommendation, do you want to touch on that?
Sure. So we have our Director for OMB, Laura, to provide more details about what was shared and also what is, what is some of their perspectives as well, unless one of the members of the BAB is here?
Oh yeah, great.
All right.
Great, so Laura, great. Thank you. Yeah, if you'd give us a little perspective. No, it's not on yet.
No?
Now we're good.
Good afternoon, Laura Reese, Director of Office and Management and Budget. The second item discussed by the Budget Advisory was briefly touched on in your joint meeting. And that is a recommendation to fund the DDA's downtown park. So, in the end, the recommendation was to fund up to $5 million. But the BAB was in favor of only this, the city only paying for one-third of the park cost and there being other limitations on this expenditure of city funds. Jeff Lowe is here. He's the Assistant Chair of the BAB if you had additional questions that I can't answer.
Great. So, yep, as we look at Hazinga Park and Greg, maybe if you would just from a high level for everyone, just give us the total funding mechanisms that are possible for Hazinga Park and where we are in that process.
Sure. So, we did budget for that and the specific amount was, I believe it was $5 million over seven years. So there is funding right now in this approved budget for the upcoming fiscal year to provide that. I think right now what we're doing is we're finalizing an agreement that provides assurances from some of the feedback that has been raised by the BAB and also by other key stakeholders as the City Commission. As we progress, I think we will be ready to solidify that agreement and then be able to disperse the funds. Anything, anything further than that, Laura?
No, so yeah, the agreement would come to you where the annual contribution is around $730,000 and that's subject to appropriation with the budget. And all of the terms of the agreement are being negotiated between the City Attorney's Office, Management, and then the DDA. Elizabeth is here representing the DDA.
Right.
If you had any questions from her and the Vice Chair of the Budget Advisory Board is also here for.
Great, thank you Laura. So again, the thinking is seven years, $700,000 each year.
Yeah, I think it's around $730,000, yeah.
Yep, yep, great.
For a max of $5 million.
Great. And in other words, the feedback we're getting from the Budget Advisory Board is very much in line with our own internal kind of thinking from a city's perspective, which I think we're all pretty supportive and excited about with the Hazinga, investing in Hazinga Park. So I think that's great because we only have two members of the Commission here today. We're unable to kind of direct staff, the City Manager, in terms of what direction we're thinking. But I think BAB's, you know, feedback and guidance makes a lot of sense. Commissioner Glassman, is that, what's your feedback?
I was actually just wondering, I did read the minutes from BAB, was the, I noticed that Mr. Lowe voted no. Was the only objection the fact that didn't think the restaurant was the selling point or was it just the restaurant or?
He's here, I'll ask him to.
That'd be great. I was just, I always curious as why people vote no.
While he comes up here, I can tell you that in negotiations, we've incorporated and addressed each of the issues that the BAB had recommended. So they're not an issue.
Okay.
So we are, we are going to make sure that we won't exceed 33%?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Jeff Lowe. Yeah, I was the only member who did vote no. I had met with several people who worked downtown, lived downtown. The restaurant was a big stumbling block for them. They didn't think we needed another restaurant, especially in that location, and they really were in favor of the green space. I don't think they were really opposed to the project as a whole, but they really liked the openness of the park.
Okay.
Okay, all right, thanks, I appreciate that.
So the concern is instead of a restaurant, maybe some of the interests of the folks you are hearing from is just keep a green space, not a restaurant?
Correct.
Okay, fair space and fair, fair concern. Commissioner Glassman, what I've heard just from feedback is that the, having the restaurant will help sustain kind of some of the ongoing operations and so forth, is it?
Right.
Okay.
No, I've heard that as well. I did also want to make a point that I think that we have to make sure that DDA folks and Riverwalk folks meet regularly, knowing that we have several amenities from Riverwalk in that particular area. I want to make sure that, you know, one group isn't just sort of like taking over and the other groups not having a chance to have any kind of input. So I think it's really important that DDA work with Riverwalk and everyone just sort of come to a meeting of the minds and making sure that everyone's needs are taken care of, that's all.
I think that's, that's fair. And I'm just seeing nods from Genie around that and, okay, great. Elizabeth, you know how to do that all well, I'm sure you're already doing. Okay, great. So I think Commissioner Glassman, I think we're good for that first communication?
Yes.
Is that fair? City Manager, let's go on to the second one, please.
So the second one is the Board of Adjustments made a communication to the Commission to request to fill the vacancies. I think Clerk will speak on that.
Yeah, please.
I'll take that one. Since that communication came in, we filled the last full-time position at the September 22nd. So there's three alternate openings, but the full-time are all, are all filled now.
Great.
So we're good?
So, yeah.
We're good.
There are three vacant alternate positions.
Okay. And I think sometimes it's a little difficult, you know, sometimes people, if they volunteer, they want to make sure that they're going to be participating. So.
Exactly.
There's not always a rush to fill an alternate.
Alternate.
You know, I just, that's at least my experience with this.
Mine too. Are the alternates consensus, City Clerk, or are they individual Commissioners appointed?
I believe they're consensus, but I'll double check that.
I think there's at least several that are consensus. Okay, so it's just something we can think about, Commissioner Glassman, as we talk to folks that want to be engaged. Okay, great. And that was the only substantive piece from the Board of Adjustment, is that right? Great, okay. So let's move on to Business One, City Sponsored Events for the Fourth Quarter 2022. City Manager?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So, our commitment to transparency and just sharing what we're doing and for the quarter provides a list of the upcoming events that will take place between October 1st and December 31st. So, within the Commission Action Memo, you will see a list of those events as well as the associated district and also the associated value per event. And those are the caps. We intend not to spend more than that. And again, our commitment is if we need to, we need to come to before the City Commission to gain permission for additional funds before we spend on those funds, on those events.
Great. And I think this is a great way to continue to improve accountability, transparency. And so I appreciate this and I think it's great for the public to be aware as well and the implementing of better checks on our process to ensure that we don't have, you know, overspending issues that have happened in the past.
Agree.
Great, great. And again, just members of the public, as you're able to engage with this material and look through it, you know, full, full layout of all of these events and as you have questions or comments, please reach out to us. We'll help explain, answer questions and get the, get the insight in that you need from there, from each of these events. Fantastic. City Manager, anything else on that, on Business One? I think we're good there.
No, no, if you have any questions, even beyond this meeting, we're available to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Let's go on to Business Number Two, Evaluation of the Potential Hardy Park Historic District, which is an exciting possibility here. Come on up.
Good afternoon.
Afternoon.
Vice Mayor and Commissioner, Tricia Logan, Urban Design and Planner. I do have a short presentation that was included in the cam for you, but this is a follow-up from a presentation that was made on May 3rd. It was a neighbor presentation from Reed Tolber, who is the property owner of the West Side or the South Side Fire Station. He had introduced the possibility of proposing a Hardy Park Historic District, which would include three of the existing historic landmarks that are located on that intersection, the vacant lot and the intersection itself that would be part of that. Staff did do an evaluation of this potential and did find that it could be a historic district with the exclusion of the vacant lot and the right-of-way. Typically, a vacant lot is not included in a historic district unless it was part of a planned development. And that's a rare case and in this case, that's not what happened. And then a right-of-way is not something that we can designate as part of the ULDR. Is it possible to get the presentation up?
Thank you.
Just to quickly review what buildings would be included, is the South Side School, which is located on the map as number one, and number two, which is Hardy Park. South Side School was constructed in 1922 and was designed by John Peterman, which is a local architect who designed other schools within Fort Lauderdale. And Hardy Park was first made significant as one of the first burial grounds in the city of Fort Lauderdale and most likely had the first interments of some of the remains of railroad workers who worked on the FEC railway extension through Fort Lauderdale. A lot of those remains have been moved over to Evergreen Cemetery, starting in 1911. And at some point in the late 1890s, the property was sent or given to the city or made public by Mary Brickell, who originally owned this parcel. And then we're going to scroll down. The next property that we're discussing is the Coca-Cola Bottling Plant. And this was built in 1938 by Courtney Stewart. It's one of several Coca-Cola Bottling Plants in Florida and they were constructed in a similar style. There's actually a twin building that still exists in Ocala. And the county is actually the owner who is restoring this property to match what it originally was and has done a lot of research about the building in Ocala to, to really pay tribute to the original historic style.
Tricia, with that, do you have, and Commissioner Glassman, you may know as well, but the intended use that the county has for that, it's just such a beautiful building. Any?
As of right now, I, I don't know what the intended use is. They are just preparing it to be used. So, they're basically whiteboxing the interior.
Right.
And when the county courthouse built the garage, they actually severed a lot of the utilities to that building. So they're actually having to put all of that back into place.
Ah, okay, great. Go ahead, thanks.
I don't think it's going to be the New County Campus though.
It's not going to be the New, right. They need, yeah, a little more space, right.
And then the last structure that's included is the South Side Fire Station and this was built in 1925. This is also a local landmark that's been designated. All three of the buildings we're discussing have been designated as local landmarks. South Side and the Coca-Cola Building or South Side School and the Coca-Cola Building are on the National Register. And so as part of the evaluation, the criteria that this building would be evaluated under is our criteria for designation. The exact criterion that staff does believe that this qualifies for is Criterion G for its character as a geographically definable area possessing a significant concentration or continuity of sites, buildings, or objects. And the buildings themselves are just united through a common theme and time period. So at this point, if there's interest in moving the, an application forward and to initiate designation of this as a historic district, we would need a motion from the City Commission, from the Historic Preservation Board, or we could have multiple property owners enter into an agreement to start an application. So that could include the city and Reed Tolber as majority property owners in this case. But we would need some further action to get started on an application. And that concludes my presentation.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Go ahead.
So Alan, there's, there are only two of us here, so we can't say bring it back to us in the night. I mean, I would certainly be in favor of bringing it back to us in the night, but there's only two of us here today.
Right, so we have to wait until the full Commission or majority of the Commission makes that determination.
Could we, if we have tonight, Alan, a majority of the Commission present, can we make a motion tonight?
No, the motion, well, the motion would have a little bit more formality and I would probably want to have notice.
Prepare it?
Agenda for that, yeah.
Okay.
So I would probably, would recommend to go to the 18th on that.
So could we tonight ask if the Commission is willing to bring this motion forward on the 18th?
Yeah, the same question that's being posed now can be posed tonight and we can probably go ahead and bring that back on the 18th with notice.
Okay. Commissioner, is that?
I would actually rather wait until the mayor returns and there's a full Commission here to make that decision.
Make that decision, to bring it forward or to actually vote on it?
Well, both. I mean, I think probably the prudent thing to do now, if we want to see this move forward, is to actually wait until we have the mayor returning on the 18th.
To talk about it?
We talk about it and move it forward at that time.
Yep.
I just think that that's the way we should go about it.
I'm good with that. That sounds good. Excellent. Tricia, what does, just for folks who might not be as aware, what does making this a historic district do? What does that mean? What's the benefit to that so public can understand if they don't?
Sure. Well, in this case, there's not much of a difference in how they're actually treated today versus how they would be treated as a historic district. All of the buildings themselves are individually designated, so they have the utmost protection per our code already and that's something that we already review. So if they were formed into a historic district, then we would just still apply the same standards. It doesn't come with any additional benefits than they already maintain.
Okay, great, thank you, Tricia. We have, Michaela would like to speak, so Tricia, if you can hang by and, yeah, come on up, Michaela. Reed, please, yeah, come, come on up, please. Introduce yourself and, yeah.
Michaela Conca, President, Broward Trust for Historic Preservation and.
Oh, Reed Tolber, I own the South Side Fire Station.
It's the owner. So we're, we're here in unison and although we haven't submitted any information or an actual application from Broward Trust, I'm here to vote for my, to appeal to the Commissions for the city to move forward with this district designation and to support Reed Tolber with his reasonings behind it. And also Reed happens to be a board member with Broward Trust as well. So in, in terms of what Tricia said, with there not being any major changes because all three structures and the park are already historically designated, I'm going to respectfully disagree with that. I do believe that the, the, that, 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 those three corners along with the park has the potential to bring more light to the city with regards to historic preservation. And the potential to, Reed's come up with a lot of exciting ideas about what could actually happen on that corner. And I'm also hoping, although we don't know what's going to happen with the Coca-Cola Building, because it's white space, I have my own little visions and ideas that I think that that Coca-Cola Building would make a wonderful shopping venue for the neighborhood and for the people that are relocating there. So, that's where the trust stands.
Thank you.
Pass it off to Reed.
And just, just briefly.
Reed, before you start, if I could just thank you.
Oh.
This was your idea. I mean, you came to me a while ago and said, hey, can we do something like this? And, you know, you working on Michaela, you, you're driving this and I just really appreciate this possibility because I think there could be some really neat synergy that we do there. So anyway, thank you for making this possible.
Thank you for that. I, I think that the benefit, aside from the, I mean, aside from the technical statement that each property is already designated, I think the creation of a district identified as such opens the possibility for additional tourism. When people come to Fort Lauderdale, it's an additional district and I think it reflects the city's commitment to preserving history. And the fact that it's a district tells people that it's, it's not just one building, there's several buildings there that they can go see at one time. So, I mean, I, to me, that's an advantage. I think it helps the entire, Hardy Park becomes part of that district and it does have history to it. So, you know, I don't see any downside to adding another district. There's, since the properties are already designated historic, that whatever restrictions apply already applies. You're not layering any additional restrictions on the property, but you are recognizing that it's just not one building there, but there's three buildings there. And I think, you know, there's a benefit in those numbers that, that people recognize that it's an actual district. It has value, yeah.
Great. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, yeah.
Appreciate you.
So, come back October 18th, we'll plan the 1:30 conference meeting is when we can discuss this again. Yeah, thank you Reed, appreciate it. Thank you.
Both.
Good. All right, Commissioner Glassman, we are chugging through the business. We are, we had planned a possible executive closed-door session, but City Attorney, because we don't have quorum, believe we cannot have that?
No. So either we'll have to, and it's a little tough because I have to coordinate a court reporter as well as outside counsel that are paid hourly. So, so presumably, I guess we're going to presume there will not be a quorum at 4:30. It's hard to tell.
Right.
So I think I'll take that gamble and we'll probably have to, it's going to create a bit of a situation for mediation on the 14th, but we'll probably have to reschedule it for the 18th. Unless we do it tonight at a time certain, but again, it's going to have to be calling back. Court reporter presuming they're available after hours as well as counsel.
Okay. So, your preference then would be to reschedule that to the 18th, is that?
Well, that's not my preference, but I think that's going to be our only option realistically.
The other option, from a timing standpoint, is this, do you feel like this is something we really should take care of today? If we do have a quorum tonight, Alan?
Well, the calendar call's on the 21st, so we're okay there. So we could still settle it if we need to prior to trial starting. Doesn't help us so much with mediation, but we can get around that. It's just, it's going to be difficult. I can't guarantee that I can get a court reporter here tonight.
Okay.
After 6:00.
Commissioner Glassman, what's your sense there?
No, I'm, whatever, whatever the City Attorney needs, just so we're timely.
Yeah, I mean, Commissioner, my, my preference is let's chug ahead with tonight. And Alan, you want to try to get a court reporter and if we can't, then we can't?
We'd have to have some kind of date, time certain.
Yeah, we can put a time certain on it.
All right, so we'll have to decide that tonight.
Yeah, we can put a time certain on it. If we need to stop the commission meeting for that time certain event, we can do that and then resume if we're not, you know.
I'll see what I can set up.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm happy, you know, having it at the start of the commission meeting too and delaying this. So whatever, you, you let us know and.
Well, we'll try to work on that.
Try to work on it, great. And then if we, we can do that tonight, great. If not, that, that's, we'll, we'll adjust. Okay, great. So that would be the executive closed-door session and then Commissioner Glassman, the next item is City Commission Reports. So would you like to start that off with your exciting things that are happening in your commission district?
Yes, there always is something happening in District Two, trust me. So I'll start off, Friday, September 23rd, we had a visit at City Hall from the Chabad Lubavitch for the Jewish New Year. It was really nice and we met in the mayor's office and it was really nice. It was a nice discussion, nice explanation, nice little ceremony, really great. And I wanted to thank Rabbi Mendel Feierstein from Chabad Lubavitch for attending. And it was, I think they do that every year. In the mayor's absence though, I did make it up there. I think typically they'll meet with the mayor every year. So thank you to City Manager and others that were in attendance that day. We had a made-to-move ribbon cutting at 844 Northeast 4th Avenue, down in the Mass District. It was terrific on Saturday, September 24th. Artist Daniel Morosi, it was about six months ago that we actually did the, what we call the art breaking for that event. It's really exciting what's happening in that part of our city. It's become just so incredibly arts-centric. A lot of young people, a lot of excitement. And people are really very committed there to making that just a really cool destination. A lot of good little galleries and I think once Fat Village comes back into play, there's going to be a great synergy there. So congratulations to our folks in TAM, Ben and your staff. And also from Mass District, Dylan Legay and everyone from Mass. So thank you so much for that event, Saturday, September 24th. That was a nice grant that we applied for and we did receive. Wednesday, September 28th, Middle River Terrace Association had a meeting. Thursday, September 29th, I convened a meeting of our District Two Presidents' Round. Thursday, September 29th, I convened a meeting of our District 2 Presidents Roundtable. We have a tremendous number of very passionate neighborhood associations in District 2. We come together every quarter and all the presidents share and we network. We learn a lot from each other and I really appreciate when they take the time to attend. And I wanted to thank Greg and Anthony for introducing ourselves and your new roles to the district. So thank you very much for that. That evening, Thursday, the 29th, I attended the Central Beach Alliance meeting at the W Hotel on the beach. More than 125 people were in attendance. That was quite a turnout for a neighborhood association meeting. That was their first neighborhood association meeting in person in two and a half years since COVID. I think, and everybody spoke that night. Greg spoke, I spoke. They must've had like 10 different speakers, but it was really good. Everyone was in a really nice mood. It was very congenial. We touched on a lot of the topics, not just in District 2, but in the entire city. And it was really, really great. The only downside is it prevented me from attending the District 4 debate that evening. I've been thoroughly enjoying attending all of the candidate presentations and listening to what everyone has to say. But I was unable to attend the District 4 meeting that night because it was rescheduled from the night before. But Central Beach Alliance was a great turnout. Coming up, tomorrow night begins the Day of Atonement for those in the Jewish faith, Yom Kippur. So I would like to just wish everyone an easy fast, those that will be observing that holiday. It is the most solemn holiday on the Jewish calendar. So an easy fast to those that will be fasting from tomorrow night through Wednesday sundown as well. Friday, October 7th, be attending the Down Towner of the Year event over at the First Baptist Church. Charlie Ladd will be honored and I'll be presenting a proclamation on behalf of the mayor that afternoon on Friday. We also have coming up on the 11th, more solid waste working group meetings with Broward County representatives from across the county, all the municipalities. I'll also be attending International Swimming Hall of Fame Board Meeting. The next night, Sailboat Ben will be having its civic association meeting. In his absence, I'd like to wish the mayor in advance Friday, October 14th, he has a very special birthday coming up.
How old is he going to be?
I hate to just say that publicly.
Let's keep it.
Let's keep it.
Quiet.
We'll keep it quiet. We'll let him talk about it.
It's going to be a big one.
It is a big one. It's really big. It's not 60 and it's not 80.
Gotcha.
Okay. So moving right along, Saturday, October 15th, over at the Marriott Harbor Beach. Greg, what are you laughing at? At the Marriott Harbor Beach, I will be attending the International Swimming Hall of Fame induction ceremony and gala. I will let you know that they attract folks from all around the world to this event. I went last year. It's really incredible and I will tell you the buzz that is worldwide over our aquatic complex, our pools that we redid and the diving platform, only one of its kind in the Western Hemisphere. People are really looking forward to coming here for events. Even just our local swimmers are so excited to be back in the pools. I get emails, text messages, I see stuff on Facebook all the time. People are absolutely thrilled that after several decades of that facility just languishing with no one in attendance, no pools open, the stands falling apart, I'm very proud of that accomplishment, not just in District 2, but all of us from the entire city because that is a game changer and you will see the events and you will see what's going to happen, especially once we see the east and the west part of that peninsula redone with the International Swimming Hall of Fame buildings. It's going to be an amazing synergy on the Barrier Island with Bahia Mar, with all of the projects along there. And it's going to be really, I think, spectacular when folks come back for all of these events that they are just clamoring to come back for. Monday, October 17th, I'll be meeting with folks from Fish and Wildlife and some local activists talking about the beach and lighting with regards to turtle lighting and other compromises that we might be able to forge. We'll be touring the beach A1A after dark because many people believe that it's just not safe. We're going to see what we can come up with. Wednesday, October 19th, Flagler Village Civic Association will be meeting. Thursday, the 20th, I'll be attending the Lake Ridge Civic Association meeting over at Art Serve. Friday, the 21st, is the Winterfest launch party at the Fort Lauderdale Marriott Beach. And then Tuesday, October 25th, South Middle River Civic Association will be meeting. On Wednesday, October 26th, I'll be cutting the ribbon for the opening. I can't even believe it's been a year, but the Fort Lauderdale International Boat Show is returning. That ribbon cutting will be at the Broward County Convention Center on Wednesday, October 26th. And the next day, I'll be attending the West Marine Ribbon Cutting at 1 East La Solas Boulevard. And that's it for me, Vice Mayor.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner. A lot of good things. Greg, can you give us, and Commissioner Glassman already knows, but just want to give everyone an update in terms of the Aquatic Center, like where are we in the continued progression? And just kind of what happens next?
Sure. I'd like to ask Phil to come up. And as he comes up, just want to say that we had a soft opening. And that soft opening just allows us to calibrate, make sure that everything's in place, but there's still some pending work.
Yep.
And that's where we want to, you know, make sure that everything's in order so that we could do a formal ribbon cutting in celebration. And Phil can share more on that.
Yeah, Commissioner, I'll need to get back to you on a specific date. We still have what we call the South Building, where the offices and the restrooms in that area is still finalizing, but they're getting close to getting done there now. And then once we get the punch list, we'll get a better idea for the commission and everybody's invited to come down. So we got that going on. And then of course, as mentioned, we have the east and west buildings working with Ishauf to get that going as well. And that's been going very well. We've had a lot of meetings with the manager and others to get that, get that set and get it moving.
Okay, great. So I mean, we're thinking soon, relatively soon, next couple of months, possible?
Yeah.
Formal ribbon cutting or?
Yeah, if I remember right, it was right around, right after the first sea year, but I'll level check and let you know.
And Vice Mayor, I can add to that with regards to the comprehensive agreement on the P3. As you may recall, a few meetings ago, we hired outside counsel to assist us with that through the business terms.
Yep.
So that's being reviewed now. We have a draft that we're working on, so we're actively working on that aspect of it.
Okay, great. Thank you. Appreciate that. Just several topics. One, Greg, if you wouldn't mind, just, you know, obviously we were very lucky and grateful to have Hurricane Ian spare us here, but obviously our neighbors in Southwest Florida really hit hard. So, you know, I know they've been in our thoughts and prayers and we're doing, you know, additional work to support them, to help them. So if you wouldn't mind just giving us, you know, a few items here. One, I'd like to hear what we're doing to help the folks that have been impacted by Hurricane Ian across the state. Two, I'd like to go through just kind of how did we do as a city in your view in terms of preparing for a possible, you know, impact? And then three, I'd like to understand our kind of emergency procedures, processes, when we think about evacuating and making that decision. Just help us understand kind of a little bit about that thinking and how we coordinate with the county and so forth.
Sure. So I could probably, if you don't mind, I could start numbers two and three first.
Yep.
And just share about what was our response. So first, we'd just like to thank the city commission for always placing public safety as a priority and providing the necessary approvals for staff, training and equipment. Our experience was one that allowed us to be prepared and also test our procedures. When we became aware of the concern on Friday, early Friday morning, we had an emergency management team meeting along with members of our executive strategy team and we met on what we needed to do. So what we typically do is, part of our plan is to assess the risk, look at paths, look at the impact, look at what resources we need to prepare, mitigate and support before and after the storm. By the time on Friday, by the time the governor issued the emergency order on Friday afternoon, we already had a plan in place. We already knew what we needed to do. I just want to share some of the things that staff does behind the scenes that perhaps gives more idea of the coordination that our team does. So for instance, already by Friday afternoon, DSD already knew that they need, they had to go out and visit all the construction sites, secure, remove barriers and filters from storm drains, secure large equipment. They also went around and looked at bulk trash that was outside and advised neighbors about putting them back in. Parks also went ahead and ordered sand, make sure that the sand distribution logistics was planned out for Sunday. We moved vehicles across locations, made sure that high clearance vehicles are ready to assist and support from the finance side. We had P-card capabilities for emergency purchases. Those were all done Friday afternoon. We're ready to go. Also, we feel that it is critical to message the community with official updates. So we already had a plan in place with StratComs on sharing that and having one message. And also, we were messaging key FEMA messaging so that our messages support the community rating system. As you know, we have a CRS system, Community Rating System, that impacts the insurance premiums and we always want to maintain that. So we were doing that as well Friday, Saturday and Sunday before the storm. And also Public Works were out and about with their trucks, Vector trucks and inspecting storm drains, making sure that they were optimal for flow of rainwater. And we also ordered additional trucks and equipment to be on standby and our debris management vendor was also alerted. So those are the things that we did on the weekend prior to the storm. We met frequently, our emergency operations staff, led by Chief Fraser from the Fire Rescue Department, adjusted the plans as we needed those done. And we do appreciate our HOA presidents, the neighbors that sign up to receive official communications. That also was key in making sure that everyone knew what was open, what was the next step, what were the plans. And that helped us also ensure that we had staff in key positions across the city throughout this potential storm to make sure that we provide that support. We also worked very close with the county. I think the county collaboration is very, very important because they have much greater reach and resources and we kept in constant communication so that we coincided our messaging with theirs and not have confusing messagings. And that way, we also close services as they close services. So I want to give a big thank you to Monica Sopero and her team as well for keeping us informed, keeping us engaged. And then I would, I would be remiss not to mention that we're all supportive of Fire Rescue Personnel, PD, Public Works, TAM, Parks, H R I T, O M B, DSD, just name some of the support staff that was, that were critical in this activation. And again, fortunately, this storm did not impact us and it was a good test of our emergency operations and plans. Now, with your question about clearing out the Barrier Island and evacuation.
Yeah, and before you get there, let's just, I just want to make a couple of comments on what you've shared already. So one, emergency alerts. So neighbors and all residents of Fort Lauderdale, you know, please sign up for this. Please sign up and, you know, Commissioner, I'm going to City of Fort Lauderdale website, so fortlauderl.gov. Click on emergency alerts, right? Click on emergency alerts up at the top and then I'm going to click here to sign up. So you can sign up right there on the website. And Greg, what kind of notifications can folks expect? Can they, text messages, email messages, frequency? What kind of stuff will they get messages about?
So what that allows us to, what that allows neighbors to do is to sign up for the Everbridge system, which is the Alert FTL system. And when we are under a declared emergency, we can call out and text out to all the people that have signed up and the ones that haven't signed up as well. So we use this system that makes sure that we call out people and I believe it was on, if I stand correctly, I think it was on Monday that we did send out, or Sunday, we sent out a mass notification via phone just to alert people to go to the website and follow the latest updates. And then on the website itself, we had all the updates shared throughout every step of the way.
Great. Thank you. And so, you know, please do sign up for that, everyone that's listening. And in terms of the proactive code enforcement going out, I got some neighbors reaching out to me and saying, hey, I think this building site has not secured parts of the construction material and so forth. Greg, I forward that on to you and Anthony and then, I mean, that was immediately taken care of. So I mean, that proactive nature of getting out in advance of the storm to button things down, look for blockages, look for things that aren't properly secured, I think was huge, really important, Commissioner. I just want to acknowledge and appreciate that.
Thank you for saying that. Yeah, no, they're very proactive. They've experienced in this matter and they have extended news training as well.
Now, one other pieces I'm hearing from the West Coast is the impact on drinking water. The ability for some of the communities there to provide drinking water. And so that's constantly, at least in the front of my mind, Commissioner, as well. If you're familiar at all with the impact there and how we can, you know, you know, prevent that happening here, give me just thoughts, reactions there.
So certainly we have, you know, we right now are with plans in place to renew our water treatment plant. And certainly the Five Ash is one that will benefit with a new water treatment plant system. And so we definitely want to make sure that we address the water treatment plant construction very soon because it could be very impactful, not having a system that can provide the drinking water for entire community. We know right now that there are locations across the West Coast that do not have drinking water. And so right now, they're resorting to bottled water and other means, but certainly that's top of our mind.
And I feel like that's a real, that's a concern for us as a community, given some of our aging plants and the need to really try to prevent that massive impact from happening. Is that, I mean, the clock's ticking.
Correct. The good thing is that we are right now finalizing the comprehensive agreement. Ms. Susan Grant, along with Alan Dodd, they're working together with the proposers to make sure that we can get this comprehensive agreement before the city commission very soon. We know that that time is ticking. It is imperative that we get to a solution very soon.
Yep. Okay. Great. Thanks on those. And did you want to go to evacuation? Is that where you're going to? Commissioner Glassman, are you, anything there? Let them go to evacuation discussions? Is that what you're going to talk about next?
Yeah, so for the evacuation, we rely on working very closely with the county. They do their assessments. They have to open up shelters. We have to work out the logistics for transportation and have a key messaging. I think that if, since we were working so close with the county, I think if we, if the storm were to be in the range of our community, we would certainly have promptly made those orders available. And we had not only county resources, but we also have our internal transportation mobility resources that we would have activated as well. And even if we had to have our own, you know, contract out buses to move, you know, neighbors from the Barrier Island or the coastlines over to the West Side, certainly that, we would have, we would have had resources available for that.
Okay. Okay. Is, so we have emergency procedures as a city, right, that we follow in event of hurricane, right?
Yes.
Is that something that is publicly available? Can folks see what that is? Is that, are we able or allowed to have that disseminated publicly?
So what I can tell you is that we follow the ICS, FEMA ICS system, incident command system. And that's a system that's widely available and, you know, and their courses, staff is trained on that. So we follow that with, you know, to the T. And certainly, I think what's very important is for neighbors to know is to sign up for updates, look at the updates from our website and make sure that anything that they hear, they confirm it. That's a city official update. And that's how we can certainly best prepare our neighbors for the next emergency. But we follow the ICS, FEMA ICS, and I can certainly share links with you and the commission on what that plan is.
Yeah, that'd be great. I mean, so I'm looking on the city website under Alert FTL and I'd love to see like a, you know, a sub-page in emergency preparedness saying, emergency processes and procedures for the City of Fort Lauderdale. And here's where you find out more information about what those are generally or what resources we're. or what resources we rely on. Some, and it may be on here already, Greg, I'm just not necessarily seeing it.
Certainly, we can send you what that link is, but we do have um details on our city website on what those steps are. We want to make sure that, that it's clear to you and clear to the commission as well.
Okay, great, thank you, that sounds good. Um, and then I guess the last one, last question on the hurricane was, how are we helping our, our neighbors?
Sure, so our public safety staff uh remains in close contact with FEMA and State Department of Emergency Management officials. Um, we follow their orders when they ask us to deploy uh because it's, it's also following the I C S structure. As of right now, we've deployed at least two urban search and rescue strike teams that they're lending a hand to our neighbors on the West. Um, as a matter of fact, one of those strike teams left earlier this morning. Um, further requests uh have come in to use uh equipment such as our mobile command unit and our mobile emergency radio system, MERS. And uh along with it comes, you know, staff that helps set up places these near their base camps. And they're also supporting what's called a JIC, a Joint Information Center, to make sure that everyone's coordinated and all the teams are coordinated appropriately. Um, so again, we rely on the state to provide us that coordination and logistics planning as well. And we follow their, their guidance. Um, from the PD side, uh, wanted to share that we've deployed at least 10 officers, one PIO and associated supervisors as well. And we've also deployed one boat and an additional uh support equipment to help and assist in their recovery. Um, the command post is assigned to a location in Fort Myers and the officers will also be providing assistance to the City of Cape Coral. And so right now we're on a one-day rotating schedule until we can ensure accommodations for our personnel. So in other words, they're leaving and coming back the same day. I was tempted to go yesterday, but um I left that to the professionals. Uh, and I know they need time, they need uh space to work together, but they're certainly doing a great job and, and a wonderful job. And we appreciate what they, their commitment to this effort.
Great, thanks Greg. And city, if city staff members are impacted, do they have the opportunity to tell, you know, supervisor or boss that family members are impacted or I'd like to take some time to help or so forth? How does that, how does that look for staff members of the city?
Certainly, if there's anyone that, um, is there, if there's anyone that has been impacted from the storm and needs to um, to take time um to, to support family members, they can certainly take um, you know, their, their time or vacation time or we can work around their schedules to make sure that they can attend their personal needs as well.
Okay, great. And speaking of city staff, I just want to commend you. You had a um, Commissioner Glassman, if you saw this, uh, Greg had a kind of like city staff town hall meeting the other day, which I thought was interesting. I asked him about it. Can you just tell us a little bit about what, what is this concept and what kind of feedback you got from it? Because I thought it was very good, good idea.
Oh, thanks.
I didn't participate, but I thought it was a good idea.
So because, because we can never find the, the best or opportune time, I think that it was a moment to get all of us together, administrative staff, and we did a virtual town hall um on Zoom, broadcasted uh from uh the seventh floor office. And uh we actually had a good turnout, uh, around 400 people were at least connected. They got one message and there was a message of, this is, these are the things that we're working on. Collaboration is key. Uh, we have a new ERP that started today and uh just wanted to.
What does that mean for those who might not be familiar?
I'm going to talk about that in a second, the ERP system. But the idea was uh for the virtual town hall is um just to help everyone understand that we're here for you, we're working together and we're within reach if you need any help or support. Um, and we did receive a lot of good um feedback. And so we intend to do that more often, engage with our employees uh and our team members um through these virtual platforms. So um about the ERP, uh, we're happy to report that um the ERP has gone live today. So this is a new system that has been in the works for the past two years, at least a cloud-based system. And so this system is replacing a, a financial system that's 52 years old. So um we're, we're now um going to be using the N4 ERP system. Um, so ERP is a financial system that centralizes all accounts, centralizes transactions, and it allows for greater transparency and accountability. Uh, we appreciate the commission for sponsoring this innovative project. A big thanks also to all the project team members that led this effort from I T to finance and to all the staff that have, has been working arduously in the past uh months to make this a success. And again, um, we're gonna be able to do inquiries in the system to get real-time data, information about transactions, purchase orders, expenditures, receivables. Uh, today, for instance, if you need, if any of us needed to get an inquiry, we would probably, it could take as much as a day to get the answers back. Now we can certainly go real-time from even our phone to get those details. Our, and so we can quickly answer, quickly adjust and make decisions. And for our, our vendors, our vendors are also going to have a vendor portal that's going to allow them to do business with the city. Uh, they could do everything online on the cloud now without even having to come to City Hall. And they can do self-service and get and accommodate information about their payments, about their contracts. And uh it, it certainly improves our ability to do business with the public.
That's great, thank you Greg. I mean, so Commissioner Glassman, I mean, I like that on a couple of fronts. One, I think it's very good. I don't, had we ever done a town hall like this with city staff in this kind of format, Greg? Is that?
Uh, I, I'm looking at Anthony, uh, no, this is the first time.
But just, I like that engagement with city staff. I think that's a great idea initiative of Greg and his team. Um, two, I, the ERP, this advanced financial reporting, transparency, accountability, you know, this type of system is excellent. And I think, you know, when we think about being, you know, financial stewards of, of our taxpayer dollars, I mean, it's these additional safeguards and checkpoints that are being, you know, put into place that I think are really allowing us as a city not only to do it right and properly, but I would say, you know, kind of move city government at the speed of business.
Without a doubt, I, I think it makes sense to update your systems at least every 52 years.
Exactly, maybe even a little sooner every once in a while.
It's like, uh, you know, I, good move.
Right, right, it's due, it's long time to.
Good move.
Um, great, so that's, that's great Greg, thank you for that. Um, a couple of other items Greg that I've got. Um, just got an email from a neighbor here, let me see. Um, would it be possible to put up a couple of renderings of the Tunneltop Park's final appearance? What it's ultimately going to look like? You know, we're making great progress, I think we're even ahead of schedule there. So could we put that on the city website somewhere? And, and again, it may already be up there somewhere and I'm just not aware.
We can.
But um that'd be great, figuring that, where to put that and what it's going to look like and our expected timeline right now. And, and Greg, again, I think, and again, maybe this is on there, I just haven't spent enough time to check. But like Swimming Hall of Fame, couple of final pictures, what it's going to look like, general timeline. Um, you know, Tunneltop Park, just some of the big city initiatives that we've got, maybe all in one place.
Absolutely, we will do that and um we will make sure that everyone is aware and we build excitement around these uh, these uh anchor points across the city.
I think also even as we get a little bit closer now, War Memorial with the ice rinks, that's going to be a big attraction for folks around the city to take their family and skate. First time ever in the cities, I think people would like to see what that's all going to look like. Being that we're getting closer and closer now.
Yeah, I'm starting to get a lot of questions about that, Commissioner, just like, when is it going to happen? And what's it going to look like? And yeah, a lot of excitement there. Okay, great, um, thank you for that. Um, next question, it kind of ties into the excitement about the um boat show. This is from one of the uh, the Church by the Sea, which is the church right near, kind of at the bend there. Um, is um where people will drop off attendees? Jungle Queen parking lot, used to be the spot, now they're doing construction there. So any sense in terms of logistics for the boat show, kind of how we're getting people in?
We may not have that answer right now.
Right now, yeah.
But we definitely need to make sure that there's a safe spot.
Right.
And one that is as least impactful to, to everything else. So definitely we will um, we'll work on that. Um, you said drop off?
Drop, yeah, the drop off for people. In other words, people that are attending the boat show, that get dropped off by say, you know, Uber or buses or so forth, kind of, do we have a sense what that traffic flow will be right now? And maybe we don't, which is fine. Um, but again, Greg, I think that could be, again, I don't want to create too many, too much work on from the website standpoint, but that could be a great just diagram again, as we learn more for the boat show on the city's website.
Definitely, we're going to make sure we have a campaign.
Yeah.
Um, about uh what is taking place and just to provide alert and awareness.
Okay, great, thank you.
And I just got a, a message from Ben Rogers saying that we have drafts and I believe they're being worked on to finalize.
Okay, great, thank you Ben, appreciate that. See if we got a couple of other items here. Oh, uh, little update, could we get a little update on Greg on EMS Substation 88, which is just um on the kind of south of the tunnel, just off Federal Highway? Just kind of how we're doing in terms of construction, estimates of starting?
I want to ask Alan Dodd that what he has.
Thank you.
Uh, Vice Mayor, I, I'll have to get back to you. I, I honestly, I don't know the, the status on, I know that we have a project manager who's working on the scope for the documents, but I, I don't have.
That's fine, okay, great, that'd be great Alan, whenever, just to get a little update, thank you. Greg, are we, at one point we were just exploring financially, you know, we're navigating the 9/11, 9/11 uh phone call issues and kind of, we were looking at possibly the cost for the city to kind of explore that, even though we know it's significant. Remind me where, are we continuing to explore that from a cost analysis or do we stop that or?
So um, one of the things that we did was, um, we reached out to um a company that does this or sets up 911 centers. Um, they were giving a very high ballpark figure, anywhere from, from 12 to 20 million dollars per year is what it would cost to have something set up and, and operate. Um, at the same time, we did receive a proposal to start an analysis. And I believe the proposal was $175,000 to just start this analysis. Now, at the same time, concurrently, um, we also saw that the county did upgrade um, training, pay, and also resources. So right now, uh, we're on a assessment mode where we're looking at what the calls performance uh for pickup has been. Um, and we want to look at this quarter to see if what the county has done has improved the overall performance. Uh, if it hasn't, then we could certainly bring this to the commission for approval to so that we could start this assessment. But just wanted to give some, um, some sense that, you know, we would start an assessment at 175,000 just to gather information so that we can then understand what an annual operational costs uh would be and how we could stand that up as a city.
Yeah, yeah, I think just personally, I feel like that makes sense to do, um, just to see how the county is doing, um, doing that, which is a very low-cost analysis, I'm assuming Greg, to just see how their, the county is performing.
Yeah, that's our staff. I mean, our staff can give us those numbers.
Right, and when could we expect that kind of uh analysis from staff?
I'd like to bring back something in November.
Great.
So that we can have that information. We have key personnel in Fire Rescue that know how, can interpret that and can share that information. And we can do comparables from um previous times.
Great, okay, that, yeah, I think like a quarterly review of how that's going, um, their system would, would make sense. So, okay, great, thank you, that's good there. Um, Greg, there was a little bit of misinformation or confusion about the uh, staff had proposed a dock rental ordinance and then uh the past commission meeting and then the staff, you know, removed that. I think a lot of us were very concerned about that ordinance. Um, that, the, those ideas for that, you know, the, that ordinance and components of it is, is no longer on the table. Um, it's my understanding, it's not going to be coming back. Um, and we're just working to just make sure we do a good job enforcing existing ordinance and, and reporting and so forth. Is that my tracking that right?
Yeah, and I'd like to ask uh ACM Farhado, uh, he's leading that charge. And certainly we uh definitely want to make sure we cover all aspects as well.
And, and yeah, and I think, you know, again, I think what we do, if there's ever an interest to update or change the ordinance, you know, before you do that, just stakeholder buy-in, neighborhoods, Marine Association, just for part of that process, yeah.
Yes, Vice Mayor, absolutely. Anthony Farhado, uh, we're going to be working closely with the Marine Asso- Marine Industry Association um to get some initial feedback from them. And then we absolutely believe we need to go out to the community and talk to all the stakeholders and get a more balanced approach. There's, there's some fundamental language in the ordinance we need to address, which is this notion that we have a conflict between volume one, which is our Code of Ordinances, and volume two, which is our ULDR, that stipulates where you can and cannot have rentals of docks. So we'll probably be cleaning that language up as just a basis. Uh, I need to talk to Alan about that and make sure that's still the direction we need to take, but.
Yes, we do.
Yes, we do. So we'll be bringing that back probably sooner, but that won't really change any of those portions of the regulation that were in this previous iteration that stipulated how many boats and measurements and all that.
Right, so great. And so my suggestion would be for even that slightly updated version is that before that's brought forward, that we still do have community outreach and.
Yes, no, that's.
Here's what this is, here's what this means, it's nothing, you know, incredibly substantive, it's just kind of.
Yes, absolutely, no, I, I won't be bringing anything forward without. Uh, I just, I, I pulled that out separately because it is an easier portion of the amendment, so you'll probably see that before you see anything else.
Okay, great, but public engagement first, okay. Fantastic, thank you Anthony. Um, excellent, uh, last thing I've got is, um, uh, Greg, we had been, you know, engaging on this idea of planting mangroves in certain, you know, certain parts of city waterways to continue to improve, you know, quality, water quality and so forth. Um, we've kind of been exploring some areas, just interested the kind of update on that.
Sure, um, again, I'll ask ACM Farhado to provide that update. He's been working with the group. I think right now what we want to do is understand a, a good spot of where this can start because mangroves are very fragile and they require a lot of protection in order for them to grow. And ACM Farhado has extensive experience in that, he can share.
I don't know how extensive it is. But um, I have a little experience. Uh, yes, so we have been in discussion with them. Uh, they've got some areas of the city that they've proposed. We've talked to, we've spoken to Parks and Rec, um, particularly Enrique, Deputy Director over there, about where some areas are that we could take a look at. We just need to drill down and see if they're suitable locations. And then we need to figure out what funding is going to look like. Um, there was a memo that was released recently, I don't know if you've seen it yet, but during this la- the last time this was brought up, Commissioner Glassman asked about oysters.
Right.
And we just did send a memo updating you on that. There are 86 locations that are, so are, there are some programs in place that are starting to look at these types of solutions. It's just a matter of how you do it because right now, the locations that we have been approached uh regarding the mangroves, some of them are in conflict with existing city facilities or potential upgrades to sea walls and other structures.
Yep, okay, great, makes sense and just, uh, yeah, appreciate you continuing to look into that.
Yep.
Okay, great, thank you. Uh, excellent, that concludes my questions, comments. Um, city manager, what, uh, anything for you to report?
No, just, uh, I think I provided those updates as I was providing you the answers to your inquiry. Um, I will be out uh this Friday and Monday. I will be using a personal day off. Um, and ACM Farhado will be acting city manager for those dates.
All right, great, Anthony, we expect big things. Yeah, he's changing the locks, nice. Um, that sounds good. Uh, Alan, I'm assuming you haven't heard anything back yet in terms of court reporter? Okay, so we'll just, we'll stand by?
Yeah, we'll, we, we'd have to make that change uh at, at six o'clock anyway, so we'll see. Hopefully by then we'll hear something.
We'll see. So, um, so that uh concludes the conference meeting and um. So, so that concludes the conference meeting, and Greg, I don't think we have any other meetings until six o'clock tonight. Commissioner Glassman will be back at it six o'clock tonight, maybe with others, too.
I would hope so.
All right, we'll see.
We will have Commissioner Maritza joining us.
Great, at six o'clock.
We'll have a quorum.
Yes.
Excellent.
Fantastic, we look forward to it. Thank you all, see you at six o'clock.
Thank you.